This conference will now be recorded.
I swear it all over the agenda and then it just went away.
I just said the same thing.
And it's coming back.
You're doing the same thing?
I had the worst time with this. I think it's just, we'll just tell Misty, it's just, she's away.
They're in trouble load, there she is messing with them and it's half loaded, you hit a button, it starts to hit three. Issues that were brought up on this. And these are just two official letters that came in. I guess I don't think we do for the. Yeah. There's a place they like who is here. Zoning change. It's two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, let's call her. Misty?
Yeah, it's two o'clock in the morning over there.
It's fine.
You probably won't answer.
It's fine, it's fine.
Misty, okay.
I'll be there next minute.
I'm gonna chance with the agenda that I have pulled up, so. Counsel ready? Sorry for the delay. Six oh one, follow meeting order. We would ask for the invocation. Jerry Freeman from Billy and Hunter's Church. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Let's pray.
Father, you have called us here for your purpose. You have pointed us for different places within this community, Lord God, but different places that are important to you. We ask, Father, tonight, your blessing upon this meeting. We pray, Father, that you will come among us, that you will give wisdom where wisdom is lacking, that you will bring your peace, Lord God, where that's necessary. That you will bring your vision, Father, not our own, but your vision for this community as well as, Father, for all of the surrounding communities as well. We thank you, Father, for the fact that you alone are the one who we can turn to. You alone are the one that has the answers, that has the hope, that brings the peace that you do. All this we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you very much. And thank you for as often as you show up for this. I pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pro call, please.
Rogers.
Here.
Holland. Hector Lane.
Here.
Sidner.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Here.
All right, item five, citizens' comments. We have Ms. Linda Vaughn with chamber announcements.
In case that for you, it's been a crazy day. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come each month and share the announcements of the Greater Robinson Chamber of Commerce. We're on the move, trying to draw more attention to Robinson and the community. So the first thing we have coming up very soon, next Thursday, is our annual membership banquet on the twentieth at the Texas Sports Hall of Fame. It's, the theme is Dinner Texas Style, and I think you'll have an enjoyable time, it'll be a more relaxed atmosphere this year. And we would love for all of you to come. Friday is the last day to purchase tickets. If you have not purchased tickets yet for the banquet, Friday is the last day. And you can purchase them online or you can email us and we can invoice you through PayPal. The next thing that we have going on is August the third at noon at Tajin, we'll be having our quarterly networking luncheon. And we, the chamber, would like to invite you, the city council, to be our guests. So if you would come to our luncheon that day at noon on August the third at Tajin Cajun, we will buy your lunch for you. And we'd love to have you come and visit with us and see what our networking luncheons are all about. This one, we will have a representative from neighbor works Whitego to come and speak with us. And Encompass Health will be our business spotlight, so we'll get some good information from both of those places. We're always looking for businesses that are willing to do a business after hours. So if you're interested in doing something like that to draw more attention to your business, bring people there that might not normally go there, whatever, we're happy to help you set that up. Our first responder appreciation day, we don't have the kinks worked out yet or whatever, but we do have the day assigned and it's gonna be September the sixteenth at the fire station over here. And then we actually do have a business after hours on the calendar, so if nothing happens and that goes through, on October the twenty-fourth, we will have a business after hours at Whitego Memorial Funeral Home Cemetery and Crematorium. So they have already put that on the books and we're looking forward to having that business after hours with them. And all of you are invited to attend, it will be five to seven, as far as I know. Just watch for updates on the chamber website or chamber Facebook page. And you're all invited to come, so thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to great things with this city of Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, we have any other citizen comments at this time? All right, item six is consent agenda, which is two meetings for the minutes of a special meeting and a regular council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda item as written.
Is that? All right, motion is to approve consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item seven is a public hearing. Continue a public hearing considering possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven regarding the application of Tommy Honey with Honey's Rentals LLC for a zoning change from a retail office and single-family residential to a commercial C one district on one point nine six acres known as block one lot one and two of the Doi Baker Edition in the CO Campo survey and on point three five acres known as tract twenty-seven in the CO Campo, CO Campo survey addressed as five nineteen and five seventeen North Robinson Drive respectively. We're gonna continue the public hearing at six oh seven. And we, this will actually be a continuation, on this continuation, as the applicant is not in town and would like to be here for the active meeting. So we're gonna continue this agenda as well. So if we have someone that would like to speak on this item, you're more than welcome to speak. If you speak tonight, you will not speak at the next meeting. If you spoke at the previous meeting, you've already been recorded, you're on record. So if there's anyone here to speak, you may wanna speak at the next meeting.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
At last, I spoke at last meeting regarding this.
Okay.
But you said I can't speak at the next council meeting.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so there, yes and no. So when you speak during the meetings, they're continuations, so when you do speak, it does count as your time for speaking. If something's different, just give me a call, John, let me, fill me in.
I see a council member misses, so are you gonna be able to vote on it tonight on this?
We're not voting tonight, we're continuing the meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
That'll be August first.
And that would be the August first meeting. Okay. If there's no one to speak on this item, we'll continue till the August first meeting. All right. Item eight, continue a public hearing, excuse me, conduct a public hearing considering possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one one regarding the application of Donnie Washington for approval of a specific use permit for a residential short-term rental on point three two acres known as block three, lot five of the Fane Estates, part two, addressed at one thousand three North Peggy Drive in Robinson, Texas. Public hearing open at six oh nine, a presentation from George.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a special use, specific use permit for a short-term rental at one thousand three Peggy. A short-term rental is permitted in this specific zoning district, this is a SF one zoning district. Short-term rentals are also consistent with the comprehensive plan, but you need a specific use permit for the short-term rental. The applicant submitted a site plan, Destiny, you can go to mine. You can go to the site plan, the site plan's also in your packets. The applicant submitted a site plan, they meet the necessary living space, parking requirements, that type of thing, they meet those requirements. They'll also be required to meet the supplemental standards which are paying hotel occupancy, occupancy taxes as well as fire suppression with the fire smoke alarms as well. The last, the P and Z meeting, there was no recommendation, the vote was split three to three, and we did receive one letter of opposition. You have that letter of opposition as a printout out in front of you. The applicant is also here to answer any questions as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
We have anyone here that'd like to speak on this item during a public hearing?
Well, I got a question, I spoke last time.
Which? This is the first time we're hearing this, sir, so this is, that would have been a planning and zoning meeting. Name an address for the mic. For the record.
My name is Donnie Washington, address is one thousand three North Peggy in Robinson, Texas. I was planning on doing a short-term rental. First, we was planning on moving in, but grandfather got sick, so we moved and we just wanted to put the house on a short-term rental, and so we were able to come back to it for now. And we did all the necessary things as far as smoke detectors and carbon monoxide. And we was hoping to get like some nurses to come in, rent it while we're away from my grandfather, so they could either work at Hillcrest or the new facility right off of the access road over there. So. Any questions for me, I guess? Like?
We possibly may. I don't think we're gonna have any other speakers during the public hearing, but we may have a question by for you.
Okay.
Can we ask it now?
Uh, no, wait till we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone from the public want to speak on this? All right, we'll close public hearing at six twelve. Ms. McLean, you have a question?
Mr. Washington, where, where will you be going, like, to take care of your grandfather?
He's in town still, Whitego.
Okay, cool. All right, just wanted to see if you were gonna be around the area, like, if something happened at the house or something needed assistance, like, how far would you be there, you could, like, get over there? Okay, okay. I mean, the opposition didn't.
We have one letter of opposition.
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson?
I don't have any questions. I know historically, we kind of said not in residential neighborhoods, this one does not come with any opposition, so.
One.
Well, one, sorry. None was in the packet, but one today. I was kind of surprised at that. Oh, that's all I have, I don't have any questions.
I know when we've done, we've done these in the past, we've put a cap on it, but I mean, are we, are we thinking we need to do this for a few years or, like, how long-term are?
During the last meeting, I was told that it's a two-year cap.
So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Baker?
Is this gonna be for, like, an Airbnb or just a short-term, like you mentioned, PR and nurses coming in, filling in at Hillcrest or?
Let me, let me interrupt that, it's the same thing. Short-term rental's gonna be anything less than twelve months. Excuse me, six months, right? So. Thirty. Thirty consecutive days. Yeah. Yeah, that's short-term rental, anything over thirty days.
You know, ordinarily, this, these are the hardest requests that I, as a councilperson, deal with because you're trying to weigh the, the outlook of the person who owns the property against the neighborhood that they are presenting it for. The only issue I've ever had is the fact that the people that are renting don't have the responsibility to the neighborhood to maintain the residents while they're there and to be responsible for any damages that may occur to their property or to the surrounding vehicles and properties and locale. This is really a tough call on all different aspects, but that's usually the only issue I ever have with it. Now, you don't have a, an established timeline in this, do you?
Not a permanent timeline, but I think you have really no less than, no more than a year.
Okay.
So that's why I feel a two-year at max, and then I would come back for pre-approval if needed.
Right. Are you soliciting residents or you have people in mind? How are you going to advertise this as an opening?
Mainly you could list it as like Airbnb, but also they have a specific site for nurses, and that's the way I was planning on marketing it.
Okay.
And we're going to do strict screenings and stuff like that to help prevent and keep neighbors and, you know, their families safe too.
Right. Have you, have you interacted with the people around you there to see what their personal opinions are, other than the one rejection letter we've got here?
Yes, I know it's pretty much all my neighbors that surround me.
Do you know the one who, who voted in opposition?
No, no, she stayed on the next street.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker?
My only thing is, usually when, when we have these and we talk VRBOs within the city limits, we usually get kind of a, a big, big attendance of, of opposition. So my whole thing is concern of setting a precedence for other VRBOs that come in that are within the city limits, that may revert back and say, well, will you grant it this? And I know with a special use permit, we can put limitations and restrictions, but I don't know if I want to get into the business of, you know, picking which ones do and which ones don't. I'd rather set a precedence to say the stance within the city is, is usually this, so.
Well, I would just say that's kind of the whole purpose of the specific use permit, is it, it does give you that latitude to look at each on a case-by-case basis and whether or not you feel it's appropriate. So by granting one specific use permit, you're not, you're not opening the door and saying, now we have to approve all of them because each, each circumstance is different and you weigh those circumstances when you make those decisions. And that's why you can create, that's why you're allowed to create specific requirements like time limits and things like that, so you can do that. So I, I would say that granting them or not granting them doesn't necessarily set a standard for all going forward, is they still are looked at on a case-by-case basis, so.
What would be the set of circumstances that would be different between properties in the same neighborhood? And that's what I mean. What I mean talking, setting a precedence, Mr. Washington's property versus somebody else on a different street, same aspects, but we get an opposition. Well, just because we got more attendees and opposition versus.
One opposition.
I would think more opposition would.
Yeah, I think more.
That is the precedence.
Yeah.
Or, or if you have a neighborhood that's predominantly owner occupied versus rental homes or something like that.
I mean.
Because you have, we do have some neighborhoods where most of the homes are rentals, and so.
This opposition isn't really even.
But it, but again, it kind of falls to your situation and things like that. But I just wanted to address the question about precedent. You're not, with a specific use permit, you're not really, I look at the planner so they can agree or disagree, but that's the whole purpose of a specific use. Otherwise, we just have an ordinance that says they're either allowed or not allowed, so.
Yeah, I feel like I'm good with this. I may, I may want to like talk to this neighbor, send her some cookies so she's not like out for you or anything, but, you know.
Any other comments?
I, again, I've, I've said this before, I've used Airbnb and do that frequently when we travel, so I'm not opposed to it, but, you know, anytime there has been opposition, I have voted against these historically. I think that that is my personal preference and the precedence that I would use, so. Someone like to make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the specific use permit for short-term rental on Block 3, Lot 5, addressed at 1003 North Peggy Drive.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-011. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye. I have an extra one.
On that special use, there's an extension.
Can I question Mr. Rogers' vote on that?
There's no, there's no two-year cap on your.
I voted in favor of that.
Oh, you did? I didn't hear you, Jim.
Yeah, we have four, two.
I thought we were doing that, like it's a mandatory two-year cap, I thought.
Has to be in motion.
Okay.
One remaining, Tom.
Okay, item nine, conduct a public hearing considering possible action on ordinance 2023-012 and ordinance 2023-013 regarding the application of Alexander Fitch for land use amendment from low-density residential to agricultural and a zoning change from a rural estate district to an agricultural district on 10.45 acres in the M. Martinez survey addressed at 607 East Moonlight Drive. Public hearing open 622. Again, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is seeking to rezone his property at 607 Moonlight from rural estate to agriculture for the intent of a, say, personal agricultural use there on this property. As you can see, this is where the property is located, right off Moonlight. I'm going to go to the next slide here. As you can see right here, this is the future land use map. That's future land use is low-density residential. Next to it there on the right-hand side is, is an agricultural land use, so it's currently, it's currently, currently low-density land use. Here to the next slide. This is the property again, it is zoned RE. Several of the properties around it are zoned RE here on the RE side.
All the green is RE?
All the green is RE.
And that's the future land use map?
This is the zoning.
Oh, so current zoning?
This is current zoning, yes, sir. There are more agricultural use over here on, on this side. This property, you know, rezoning, rezoning to ag is not consistent with the future land use plan, however, rezoning to ag is consistent with the rest of the surrounding land use as its rural context. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of 6-0 at the June 22nd meeting, and we have received one letter of support for this rezoning.
So the future land use right next to this lot is agriculture?
Yeah, so, yes, so the future land use right here, this is the future land use map. These two parcels over here are all agricultural land use.
So that's our future land use map there?
It's the future land use map.
And so we're showing the future land use map as being ag right there to the east?
Yes.
And then go down to the current zoning?
And then low dense on the side?
No, the other way?
The other.
And so our current zoning has it as residential?
Current zoning has it as rural estate, yes.
So our future land use map has it moving to a less restrictive, less dense. That was a miss.
This property was recently, we just recently put that as RE, like when we did our land use maps. Is that not correct? Were these all RE prior to?
Are you talking about the 2018, the city line? No, RE didn't exist. 2018.
So, and they're currently RE, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's because there was already a home on them because they were.
So that was kind of our blanket, we put that on top of this property.
Yeah, we had to assign.
Rural, sorry, agriculture before.
Before, no, there was no ag.
It was just R1.
There was no ag in the city.
The whole city was R1 unless it was something else back then, so.
And so we decided RE was the best fit for that.
Well, it was based on what's currently there, because most of those home, most of those properties, the ones under five acres, didn't qualify for ag, but they have a home on them, so I think the idea was since most of those properties have a home, they just were all zoned rural estate, given the current land use.
And this, well, and this lot is one of the flag lots that's, we don't permit now, correct?
Oh, you still do flag lots?
Yes.
Still do what?
The, and just to clarify, there was one letter of support and the applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
Which is rural estate. It's currently RE, so it's, it's good.
And so the future land use is going back to ag.
Agriculture, this is low-density residential.
Future land use has it as RE. That's it right there, correct?
All right, yeah, so this is the future land use, again, all this is low-density residential. Over here, the bright yellow is agriculture. This is the land use, and then to the zoning, yes, we should do the next slide. It's currently zoned RE along with the surrounding, surrounding properties. The larger parcels around it are very rural in nature, just, just like this property. Over here, you do have some truly ag surrounding properties. That's in dark, that's in dark green.
Okay, we are in a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? Step up, sir. Name and address, please.
Alexander Finch, 607 East Moonlight Drive. That's the property describes. I'm a homeowner.
I was like, name sounds familiar.
So thank you all for your time today. So my wife and I moved in there about a year ago, and we planted about 50 strawberry plants. My wife's planted more than a dozen fruit trees. We got blueberry bushes. In addition, there are already extensive grapevines that kind of replace some existing blackberries, dewberries, so I don't know if that was a good trade. I kind of liked the dewberries, but they overtook them. We're hoping over time to get dairy cow, some rabbits for meat, chickens for egg production, kind of letting our existing quail die off to replace them with chickens. Quails are so small, they're just not worth it. So we were interested in the rezoning because we saw that under regulations, I think there are certain uses for agriculture that, that don't exist for rural state, even with a special use permit, things like, I think, dairy, meat processing, and, and produce stands were the three that we were looking at, where if we did get dairy cows, we probably have significantly more than our family could consume, so we just want the ability to, to maybe sell that or possibly the same thing, if we produce more meat than we can consume. So I've got a full-time job at Texas Farm Bureau. I can't say that I'm like a, going to be a farmer out on the field every day, but we're trying to just make sure that we can do that kind of homesteading and, and maybe have the ability to engage in those activities without, without kind of like stepping outside of the, the allowance of our current zone.
I like it.
Anyone else to speak on this item? All right, we close the public hearing at 629. Mr. Baker?
No, I, I understand the applicant's reasoning behind his application. I think it's a pretty good idea. Thank you.
I'm good.
Same, I'm excited for it.
Quick question. In the add-on summary, it does say, uses such as dairy, animal processing, and produce standard not allowed in the rural estate district, but it is allowed in ag district with an approval for an SUPs, with a SUP. So I guess at this time, it would just be approving the ag zoning, and then if, in the future, he desires for the other, then he'd come back for a special use permit. Did I read that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I understand.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. I actually support it and would like to make a motion.
Go on. I will second.
Motion to approve ordinance 2023-012 and ordinance 2023-013 regarding the application of Alexander Fitch for a land use amendment from low-density residential to agricultural and a zoning change from real estate district to agricultural district on 10.45 acres in the M. Martinez survey addressed at 607 East Moonlight.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-012 and 013. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You all have to recuse yourselves for this next one?
Yeah.
You what? You have three of us.
Yeah, right.
So we have three that have to recuse on this next one?
I don't know if I want to turn this over to you or you have to.
Yeah.
It's just, but let them know.
Okay.
Because I need to talk to them.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Rogers, we'll turn it over to you for this next item.
I'll take a minute. Thanks. See if I remember how to do this. Item number 10 is a public hearing, conduct a public hearing, consider and possible action on ordinance 2023-014 and ordinance 2023-015 regarding the application of Alyssa Radel for the land use amendment from commercial to low-density residential and a zoning change from retail office district to single-family SF1 district on .551 acres in the M. Martinez survey addressed at 701 West Moonlight Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Go ahead and skip forward here to the map, because it'll be a little easier to speak from. There you go. Thank you. So this is the, the, the subject property, right off Moonlight Drive, 701 West, West Moonlight Drive. The applicant is looking to rezone it from a retail office designation back to, or to SF1. In the 2018 zoning process, this property, like several properties along Moonlight Drive, were rezoned to retail office, but they're still homes, they're still used as, as homes. When this happens, it's called a legal non-conforming use. The city's zoning ordinance, states or actually has a few mechanisms that, that, that can trip that, so they can stay, can stay a legal non-conforming use, you can still use a property as a, as a home, but if it's a change in ownership, if it goes vacant, there are a few, there's a few other items that, that, that would trip, would make, would trip the mechanism to, to automatically, I mean, keep it as a RO and no longer have that single-family or residential use. And that's essentially what we have here. I'm going to go to the next slide. So this is the, this is the future land use map. As you can see, it's all, it's all commercial designated. That's the property there.
Well, actually, actually, most of that was redone with the plan development. Land use was updated too with the plan development.
Okay. So the land use was updated for plan development. This, what you see here on the zoning map, you see that there's a plan development or. on the zoning map, uh, you see that there's a plan development around it as well. Uh, the applicant, um, is here to, to speak on this or answer questions. There is a, a hardship within the family, uh, that caused the property owner to have to leave the residence for a significant amount of time, uh, the water was shut off and then, uh, therefore kind of tripped that mechanism to where now it's, it can be used, it only can be used as retail office and not as residential. So you have pictures of the properties in your packet. The P and Z approved this zoning change, uh, six, six zero at the last meeting. And the applicant, I don't think I'm forgetting anything here, but the applicant is here to, uh, speak upon their situation and answer any questions, uh, that you may have.
And I would add that we have, we have one letter in favor of the rezoning and that is from the, um, managing partner of the plan development that surrounds this on three sides. They are in favor of the rezoning.
And one more thing I would like to add, that rezoning to SF one would be consistent with the plan development that's happening around it and other residential uses around the properties as well.
Thank you, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this item? Do you like, come on up to the microphone?
Did you officially open the public hearing?
Before we do that, I'd like to officially open the public hearing at six thirty-six. If you could state your name and address, please.
Bruce Riddell, following all of the purchaser, Felicia Riddell, her, my son, cop. Uh, zoning commission approved the SF one because it was a non-compliant code and all the property around it, as you've mentioned before, is now specified as SF one. And as you can see, there's lots of investors that had to recruise theirself from this boat, but as the, since we have gone through the plan and zoning commission and got it approved, we're asking that the city council approve what zoning commission approved.
If you, did you state your address, I don't know if I heard.
I live in, uh, four two four Hewitt Lane, I mean, Lindenwood Lane, Hewitt.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak on this item? Being done, close the public hearing at six thirty-seven. Council, do you have any, those that are left, is there any questions?
No, I don't have anything.
You good, Mr. Mashburn?
Yeah, I'm saying that this is already surrounded on all three sides by a planned residential community, I don't see there's any reason that we should change, uh, change the, the way that this is looking forward, so I'm, I'm good with this, as it's, uh, applied.
Did, did that sound like a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve this, oh, let me see. Okay, approve ordinance two oh two-three dash zero one-four, is that the right one? And ordinance two oh two-three dash zero one-five regarding the application of Felicia Riddell for a land use amendment from commercial to low density residential and a zoning change from retail office district to single-family district on point zero five five, uh, point five five one acres in the M. Martinez survey addressed at seven oh one West Moonlight Drive.
And I will second that.
All right, we have first and a second.
Thank you. I don't have any reading glasses, I can't see anything.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. And, will you go?
I'll go get them.
Okay, item eleven, conduct a public hearing, consider possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero sixteen and ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seventeen regarding the application of Jerry and Peggy Wilkie for a land use amendment from agricultural to low density residential and zoning change from an ag, agricultural district to a RE district on two point zero zero four acres in the Accoland survey approximately addressed at three eighty-eight Downsell Road. Public hearing go six forty?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The applicant purchased approximately two acres, I believe for a family member, um, in an ag, ag district, he was like, he would like to rezone it to, to RE, to, to build a home, to build a home on it. As you can see in the packet on the screen, this is the, this has already been surveyed out, but this is the, the property or the area that he would, like to build a home, or the, the property or the area, it's subject property. And you can see it's currently in a future land use map, it's, um, it's a local, if you go to the next slide. It's also zoned by a local, so it's looking to be zoned from ag to RE in order to build a home. I purchased two acres, um, you have to have at least one acre, um, or more for RE. P and Z, the last meeting. Yeah, recommended zero. Yeah, six zero, approval of the rezoning, and there are no letters of opposition. The applicant is also here to answer any questions as well.
Jordan, could you repeat that as to why they needed to go RE to build a home?
Yeah.
They have to have, they only have two acres, can't build on two acres with those ag zone, it's got to be at least five acres to be ag zone.
All right. Ready for presentation? We have anyone that could speak on this item? Maybe that address, sir. Motion to approve, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? When you starting to go?
Being by Christmas.
Before we jump off on the next one, I think we were missed here, I just assumed I've already introduced you guys. The gentleman here next to, forever hard, he's been answering questions, he was our new planner, David Harrell, he started a list a few weeks ago, he's already been in the P and D meeting last, forgot, just to give you some context. So I want to introduce him, he's, he, uh, graciously allowed Jordan to finish out the cases, he was working and he will be picking up everything from, from here going forward, but we were very happy to have him on board and I probably know more than you.
Welcome aboard, David, do, do we have names worked out for all these Davids yet?
We have four Davids, although we don't have one. And three of them are all in the same department. Three Davids and Michelle.
All right, item twelve, considering possible action regarding the application of Stephen F., excuse me, Stephen J. Freeman II with Freeman Surveying and Mapping LLC on behalf of Brett Myrick with Robinson Old Road Development LLC for preliminary plat approval of the village at Creekside being part of fifty point five three eight acres in the C.O. Campbell survey abstract thirty-two with the approximate addresses of seven thirty-six North Old Robinson Road and the set, and in the seven hundred block of Greg Drive.
Thank you. Uh, the, the plat and plans, um, in your packet, uh, depict a proposed one hundred and forty-four residential lots, um, this site is presently zoned SF two, um, and it will, it will, uh, have your typical residential, uh, neighborhood features. Uh, the preliminary, preliminary plat and plans were submitted, uh, at June eighth. We have received comments back from our review engineer, uh, we've had construction plans or, or plan comments back, um, we're waiting on getting the preliminary plat comments back. P and Z's approval, uh, our recommended approval of this plat was six to zero in the condition that the comments be, uh, satisfactorily addressed. Those comments have been provided to you at your notice.
Yep.
One set covers the plats, the other covers subdivision construction plans associated with the coverage.
You mean the bird, Lou?
Yes.
What do you do today?
I'm the one today.
Okay, so there's a, a representative here today that can, can answer questions.
May I have submitted the full construction plans on this?
That is, that is correct, uh, just, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Lemon. The, the plans that were submitted are, are full construction plans, they do exceed what is required for preliminary, um, but, but there are, they have been reviewed and we are confirming those comments have been addressed, so they are, they are full construction plans.
I think one of them is the larger lot down there off of Greg.
Yeah, it's, that's our.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the plat, there's actually a design plan down a little further that shows it.
Yeah, there's, there's a full construction plan set with it. The construction plans that were submitted exceed what's required for preliminary plat, these are actually the construction plans for the final plat.
Mr. Rogers, any questions?
No, I have, I have none, um, other than the, do we typically have this many, uh, responses for changes on preliminary plats? Or?
Yes.
Yes.
Why not though?
The, the, um, the co, the comments are pretty straightforward, so that, that's the plan set, the comments are, the comments are pretty straightforward and so, uh, those have been addressed and, uh, our engineers have been finding that.
Divisional construction, large sets of comments because of such a detailed work and the, but in my experience, a lot of the comments are finer, so it's easier to test.
I don't know if we've ever been provided with one of this, this detailed form, that's why I ask.
I mean, typically, the, typically the comments are all, if they're all worked out, they'll usually be in the packet, but they, you know, they follow in with the other hundred and something pages of documents and that is the item.
Other than that, I really, I really don't have any questions for this project.
Mr. Stein?
Love.
Yes, is the point?
Nothing.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Mr. Mashburn?
Good with me?
So do we need it approved with the conditions still attached?
Yeah, so we, uh, those will be the conditions that the comments. You said comments to the preliminary plat and to the what? All right, I'll make the motion to approve the application. Yeah, various creeks, I like the motion to approve the preliminary plat of the various creekside with, uh, comments addressed to the preliminary plat and some construction laws, as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion to approve and further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
She being by Christmas tree, bro. All right, I am thirteen, conduct a public hearing, consider possible action of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eighteen, amending ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero nine, increasing the rates for solid waste services, correct?
So each year about this time, Waste Management does come to us with, uh, requests for rate increases based on our contract that's in place. That, uh, contract did automatically renew for the next two years, so it is still in effect. They did in, um, early June submit an application, but unfortunately it was too late to get on the last agenda requesting an increase and they, and their request asked that we consider increasing the amount by the April CPI of six point nine two and a three percent increase for the fuel surcharge, uh, based on a diesel rate of three dollars and fifty-five cents per gallon, that's based on the Gulf State Diesel Index that's done by the Department of Energy. So they, they submitted that, we've had a little bit of, uh, back and forth about the fuel surcharge. Waste Management's, um, position is that each year that the fuel charge remains above the ba, the base index rate for the surcharge of three dollars a gallon, they are entitled to the increase, whereas the city's position has been that you're entitled to the increase, but as this contract states, it will increase or decrease as follows. And so it's not cumulative, it goes up to cover three dollars and seventy-five cents one year, if it stays at three seventy-five, you don't get a.
That's your phone.
I think it's your phone.
Phone, your phone, Bert, not your computer.
Wow, Apple wants to raise the price too.
Yeah, so, um. And I lost, where was that?
Sorry about that.
So that, uh, yeah, so the increase would be cumulative, so if it was, if the price stayed at four dollars for three consecutive years, they would be entitled to a five percent increase each year, whereas the city's position is, no, you were entitled to one five percent increase and then when it comes back down, it goes back down based on those same numbers. So, um, I guess we agreed to disagree, so I said that I would bring their proposal and I also made a proposal, I did mine off of the May CPI, which is what we typically do when we do these, I think the last four years have all been on the May CPI. Now, the May CPI is actually bear advantage, it was seven point nine percent for, uh, trash, so that is the increase that I propose in the second voting. And now we have Mr. Paul Vandero with Waste Management to get up and speak, he wants to offer his side of the issue here.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon, I'm the mayor of Marytown. This year, it's not not five years of this contract. On the third as well. It is confusing. Based on the May. We all. So it goes up or down. Our our. Our opinion on that is that it's a lot of. Let's see if you know that I'm absolutely convinced that. Because we do. When we put this together, it's why. People don't actually go. Three hours later, how long would it take? So we might suppose going forward, if you don't want to sign. Three five minutes. And then it's fifteen minutes. I think that's here. Here, I haven't taken care of that. Pretty sure. And however, I would help them out. Not because there is. That's the proposal. I'll give you the different part of that. But I'm. I want to question you first. Right, so usually we go about the may. May, two, three, four. We were trying to get the. Here, I was trying to get this for him. Then he's CPI colors. But usually we're finding that we can. So that's what for the six point nine two. That's probably. This point is. And actually. With the another. I feel so far. And part of. Why? I think that what we're not. And that's why I came back. If you're totally against. That's why.
And and that is what we have been, I think, every year since the contract. A few years, you think in our advantage. I think the first couple of years you sent you sent it early on and we had April and by the time we got to the May, it was lower. We're gonna use the day. So so in the sense of fairness here, I'm trying to be fair of both the rest and respect. Like I said, that.
But our condition is we believe that. The great security of the class itself.
Cover support. In the background, we cover continue to cover. And so therefore, we're going to do this.
Well, I see him here in this.
That what's in that letter is based on the mine. So you have two ordinances in there. Well, actually, in my. In my memo, those scenarios are there, what it would be. And there's there's the kind of the franchise fee of the going fee. So what's in my memo that includes the franchise and going fees? Because the top one is based on their reflects grade and the bottom one is based on my. And you said. Or. Oh, we can. Not sometimes. And we're down for. And also. And we can bring it. He sent that working over, but I didn't get it on Thursday. There was no time. This was such a big deal. We're in a three-year agreement. So but we we can amend the current contract, so we can put in all features when we're finished and we're comfortable. We could just do a golden end and we'll change this this. The way to. Before before the settlement. Yes, yes, yes. That's why I didn't want to rush it to you because I didn't have time to show. Really, I didn't have time. This was a really big agenda to get put together and it's in the middle of budget time.
It's the. That is. At three dollars.
No, no, that that'll be something that we're. We'll probably get through budget and bring it back. So.
I do have one one question. I was interested. In my package, I've got an example. It says, you know, about the price staying at four dollars for three years. Then the rate will increase five percent this year. Then that rate fifteen point seven six percent. When the price falls back below three, the rate will only increase. Is that is that what it is? Take a. So if if the rate stays at the price that it costs dollars to be. The rate will increase five percent. Right, that's yeah, that's that's the way that we. That's the damage. So about. That's the price. And if we always go low that price, that's. With the money. And that that's still. When it falls back below three, you know it's about. Under. Under, so. Two dollars and nine nine six. No, you don't. Of the. Eighty of them.
Actually, twenty-five. They'd have to drop the piece of.
Not to be discussed.
So. So in that scenario, it's actually cost, it's also cost. Decrease is more depending on.
And we we have quite long discussions about.
Oh, so I gotta say that.
Yeah. Okay, um. I hope you have it here. So let's open the vote here at seven oh four. Do we have anyone that like to speak on this? Going going down, seven oh four. And I I would just add back to the whole reason we tried this kind of language, this is actually taking that into the contract. A lot of times in the past, there's been the surcharge is nothing up. And fuel goes up or down. And so that requires billing, has to everyone billing and then changes to the billing and the customer's billing go up and down. So we were trying to take that out and creating a contingency year ago. But it ended up being way more confusing than I anticipated. We're gonna we're gonna try. We'll we'll agree on what the interpretation is before the. I just need to do a free. Just need to say good words and if we. Wouldn't stand a free. Waste Management recommended and. I'll make a motion to approve. Please, please, I see. I'm in the. My. People with this. Is that my thing? I would be.
So I'm just.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm.
All right. Motion is to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three. That's eighteen, amending twenty eighteen dash one nine. At the seven point nine percent rate. All in favor? Oppose. Happy anniversary. He's pinning his.
No.
Enjoy.
I made.
Didn't even bring her in. Yeah, I just. Yeah, you can practice. You can hear, he's fine.
We don't cut anybody.
Oh, poor thing. You can have him now.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah. Hey, Tashin's pretty good. Hey, it is good, I'm not lying.
Good night. Item fourteen, conduct a public hearing, considering possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nineteen. Providing for amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget to reflect appropriation transfers as outlined in exhibit A of the ordinance. Public hearing open seven oh seven with Craig.
So this we do this each year about this time. This is adjustments. This incorporates not only changes the departments have requested based on unexpected occurrences during the year, but also gets all those things that you've been approving individually during different agendas as we've brought you individual items. And we incorporate those into this mid-year adjustment. So that's what you have before you, Ty. Just a real brief overview, the the general fund projected revenue increase is increasing by one million, three thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Eighty percent of that increase is due to the funds that are allocated for the purchase of the new fire engine for the volunteer fire department. And I think it's eight hundred and twenty thousand is going toward you, eight hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and six of that. The additional increase is just higher than projected sales tax revenues and much higher than projected interest rates. I did the budget last year, interest rates were down and I projected like hundred and I think I projected thirty-five thousand dollars and we're gonna do like a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand. So so that's the additional revenue that's increased there. Expenditures are projected an increase by nine hundred and seven thousand, three sixty-six, again, eight hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and six of that is purchase of the fire engine. Another fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five is for the Peplo Park parking lot. If you remember, we budgeted two hundred thousand for that. By the time the engineers did the preliminary stuff and seeing where concrete has gone since last summer, it's pushed that up to the two fifty-one, two forty-five, which includes the engineering and surveying and bidding and everything on that. And. There's other change, just changes here, here and there, some savings from personnel and just a lot of line item transfers that are outlined in here. In the attachments exhibited with the ordinance. Shows you. Individually definitely not looking down. Most of it is a wash, there's some things are going up here and this is moved to another line item. Original budget is approved. Projected to reduce fund balance by three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-six. This amended budget reduces fund balance by two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six fifty-one, which is a positive difference of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And the utility fund projected revenue is increased by two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. Most of that is coming from interest, higher interest rates. Probably expensive to project to be. Nine million, six hundred and thirteen, thirty-one thousand, seven sixty-nine, which is here in twenty south, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars more than the original budget amount. The biggest thing driving those increases are. Up motor failures if you hold you well and then the upforce and then the intake space. And we all approved. Especially in a couple of weeks. So the amended budget reflects a production of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight. Whereas the original budget was going to be projected a production of three forty-six, eight fifty-one. There was one big line item transfer. We had allocated six hundred and fifty thousand. Utility fund fund balance for the A and Y projects carried over this year. We have put that in the administration budget, the finance is actually total and all that. Partly changed. So the difference is a net benefit of nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars in utility fund and the ending unallocated reserve of six hundred and three hundred and fifty. And then general fund capital projects is increased by one million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars increase. Changes to the project on the. Make an industrial foundation. We originally did the budget, we projected the total cost of about four million. Just like for concrete and we went up by the time we did it and ditched the race industrial foundation added. Almost five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in additional work that they wanted to pay for and they did. Agree to pick up that part of the cost and all of this. And I would be happy to answer specific questions that the public. Speaking of, we have everybody in the public. On this budget appropriation transfer. Eighty-six seven. No, that's I think I think we're probably. Any concerns where we are on arbitrage? I mean, a lot of the no, that's debt interest. This is actually meant to come fund out of second. Yeah, that is only interest on debt. If we have any debt issues, we're holding it. This is actually the only shift. Both the general fund and. We got a little deep rail though. Yeah, there's no there's no risk of earning.
I just.
Mayor's. I was gonna say the salary line item for mayor's account is hidden because everything was zero. You can't you can't see the lines of zero. So you can't see the counter side. Eight hundred and some thousand. Yeah, it should be kept kept out when it's going to start. It's well, eighty-five hundred. You use the you use the. Okay, yeah, that's what, that's, that's recognizing the revenue. Um, that y'all approved, um, you know when it was, Jacob, your bench, y'all approved that, you're looking approved development agreement. They actually want to redo the panels, actually roll in our costs a bit.
Probably. It'll make it faster.
And so far off, all the, those involved in paying the money. The lift we neglected, all of it yet. Yeah, this is actually, the, the table is generated directly out of, exported out of third gen and then I just put my stock. It makes me a lot of sense.
Questions or possible action? Alright, um, I make the motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine, line for amendment to the fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty-three budget for reflection appropriation here for the, uh, Exhibit A. Motion is to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item fifteen, consider impossible action regarding the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash R, providing for a waiver of penalty equivalent on deleting taxes in accordance with Texas tax code section three, three point zero, one, one. I've been scratched about this and we have seen a couple of these.
Yes, so this is another request that has to do with the late payment penalty and interest related to the ice storm at the end of January and the mail not being picked up on January thirty-first and therefore being delivered late to the tax office. So the applicant here has submitted a copy of the, uh, envelope showing that it was postmarked on the second of February, which is when the, the mail started running again. And, um, showing that they're.
Just have one comment or question. Is this Texas tax code we're seeing? Can I make a recommendation of changing that so in the future they don't have to?
It is Texas tax code, yes, yes.
So we could just adopt a general?
No, this, no, this is, so the, yeah, the tax assessor took the position that under the tax code, they can only waive the penalty and interest if it's something that they did that caused the delay. In sense that they didn't cause the ice storm or the post office failing to pick it up. Their opinion of their legal was they didn't have, did not have the authority to waive the penalty and interest, each individual taxing entity. So it would, it would take the state amending the state law to. There's nothing we can do by ordinance and they have to go to each taxing entity. So, so these individuals that live in the city, they're having to go to the county, the school district, the city and the community college.
Is it, are all prejudiced taxing entities doing it that way or is this?
All which now?
All taxing entities handling that the same way or, or they're?
Yeah, I mean, they have to go to each now. Not everybody has approved all of them because there have been some people come in and I think they've heard about it and they come in and say, you know, I got delayed, but then they find out that the payment wasn't actually delivered to the assessor in the, um, February or something. Most individuals, it's not. We're not seeing the check being cleared around the second or third and that. Now, the county gets, county has lots of these made. I think these are fourth John, fourth fifth John. County's had whole stacks on it. We got one from Ontoys, it's like thirty pages, but everybody's. We're not buying any of this stuff. So it hadn't come forward yet, there's still some back and forth on that one, but.
Has that a motion under consideration?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, motion to, uh, approve of this twenty-three dash year one year of that, all the life delivery of companies.
Next, we can clear. Motion is to approve, you didn't, uh, state it, any further discussion? Negotiations for that.
Yeah, I think the check is actually for penalty. I think she went ahead and paid the penalty, so it wouldn't be a free interest. Well, I think once she takes us back and we'll. But yeah, I'm pretty sure that was maybe actually, um, I was looking at that tree and it looks like that's the penalty.
Well, I'm having issues with this system. Why should we be rewarding someone who isn't efficient enough to pay their taxes on time?
Well, their argument is they did pay them on time, but the post office didn't pay them.
Say, Dad, how many months before that date to pay their, pay their bills?
Do on a day.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't agree with that, that's just my personal opinion. By being in my budget that way, I'd be in trouble all year long.
We, we have, we have had a few people come in and submit and we tell them everything they have to do. They said, I'll just make sure I pay a few days earlier next year. So yes, that has happened, but, but technically under law they haven't told the thirty-first. We did learn that everybody's mail here goes to Dallas, so if you didn't know that, if you take their mail over here to the post office box tonight, so they're getting to Dallas.
Well, if you keep living in the apple again, it still will continue.
Alright, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash R. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider possible action through approving a proposal from Walker Partners for survey, design, bidding and construction administration services for the expansion of the parking lot at Peplo Park. Craig, you got this too?
Yes, yes, so this is, uh, it's taking a little time because we've had a few other things going on at the same time, but we do have a proposal from Walker Partners for the design of the parking lot. We'd estimated this at about two hundred thousand back when we did the budget last summer, but everything just keeps going up. So by the time we got to the point of doing a cost estimate and everything, and we actually, I think, looked at a couple of different options to try to save a little bit of money. So, um, the plan you have before you, uh, takes care of the engineering, the bidding and everything, uh, construction staking and everything related to the engineering side of this. And then you have a cost proposal that's in here with a contingency amount. Um, and then there is a schematic and we debated whether we wanted to go to the expense to move the flagpole or not and decided to try to work around the flagpole. So, um, they did.
By the big rock in the front?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the thing was we'd have to either move all that or just so we, but it did allow us to create a little bit of bus parking. So when buses go in, they can park along the one side, but it will, you'll come in one side and you'll go out the other side. It does add, you remember how many parking spaces it adds?
Twenty-six spaces?
Uh, as originally used, but right now it's got nine parking spaces.
And two bus parking spaces. Right now the buses park on the street.
When does this project get started?
You ready to go out for bid?
Yeah.
So we're, we're, we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars design concrete, right? Gosh, all money.
That was engineering cost too.
And we're required for that from the state. This, if it's a public improvement over twenty thousand dollars, it's required to be engineered and bid, yes.
I disagree.
What's that?
I disagree.
Are you making this?
No. Wait, what was the waste of funds?
That's the funds for engineering, the concrete to pour it.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. I agree.
Contact.
You just can't say, before concrete, you gotta have it.
Contact your state representative because that threshold of twenty thousand has been there for fifty years, probably. I mean, it had, I've been doing, I've been doing city management type stuff for twenty-six years and it's been twenty thousand dollars the whole time. So it's not gone up. Same thing with bidding threshold at fifty thousand, they tried to push it up to a hundred this year, but the legislature wouldn't approve it. So the costs of things are going up, but we still have these low thresholds, so, yeah. Until the legislature changes them, we have to work within them. I don't want to go to jail.
No, 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 no.
Wait, what are you talking about? What is the engineering cost, which, what are you talking about?
This is to get it started, this is.
This is just the engineering proposal. This is twen- twenty-five thousand.
Put it out for bidding.
Twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars plus, uh, well, that includes the projected staking cost to do the survey and stake it out.
Oh, Walker's fee is right to pay for the project.
Oh, okay.
That's already done, right?
No, no, no.
This is Walker's fee.
This is Walker's fee. This is just a propose for them to, they just did preliminary design on it and came up with an estimated cost.
Yeah, but we know how important that is.
Thank you. I wasn't thinking, I was just thinking the threshold needs to be higher.
I was just beginning to be in the game.
I wholeheartedly agree, but, yeah. That, that all gets done, that all gets done ninety miles south of here. We have a hard enough time doing things we do here, so all that's ninety miles south. And they probably have three or four special sessions coming up, but we're gonna try to stick something on there. Call the governor. Yes, yeah, and then we'll put it out for bid, then we'll get the bid for the. Probably not out here, I think we're, we're getting back to. You see, look, we're getting kind of close, turns getting kind of close with the little, uh, enter pier. And the people go through their forty, making that turn, you think.
Okay, we have a motion to approve proposal from Walker Partners, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Hobbs, consider a possible action approving a change order for Greenbrier Town Storage Tank Project.
The council is aware of the, the, this whole project is Greenbrier Ground Storage Tank. And while it had worked, the town last week done is take the tank and return the floor, that is the place. For this change order is to cut the cost, to replace the floor and one part of the original contact.
That's, that's the photos down below that look like the surface of the moon.
Wasn't, didn't we, wasn't the approval for fifty to a hundred, something like that?
So I think, I think we had a couple of these initially that we put all this extra money in to redo the floor and we didn't need it done. So this time we thought, well, we haven't had to do it the last few, so we didn't put it in this one. So the moral of the story is I guess put it in every one, whether we need it or not. If we don't, then we save the money. And that just involves welding new plate on the floor, right, Greg?
They're gonna put a layer of sand on the base of it, get it to kind of level it up and the new plate, go lay right on top of that, ready, new welding and all that.
So it'll have a whole new solid floor, not just, not just welding patches over the holes.
We had a little allowance for patching, but it was, so that kept covering some of the calls for the floor and then that's too weight to let you patch. Best route is to replace it with a tar, we get some on gift, we have to use that.
Is that sand pushing strong enough to support the plate without any issues?
Yes, sir, yeah, a little, you know, a little sway on top of the, you'll still, still have to put underneath it, just simple like, or plus those, please, simple like.
Okay. Alright, you won't have any flex or buckling on that?
It, we will, but.
Does that tank have a liner in it as well, or is that just steel sided and steel bottomed? There's no way to put a liner in there to?
Well, it's coated.
It's got a coating.
Okay.
How old is that tank, Craig?
Since last century?
I'm approving the change order for the Greenbrier Ground Storage Tank.
Motion is to approve the change order, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item eighteen, consider possible action selected confirmed about audit services to the city of Robinson.
I didn't, I didn't want to steal your funding. So our current, uh, our engagement with Del Harris and Chachek actually ran out a year ago, but because so much stuff was going on, the council did a one-year extension of it, so that is up. So we did go out for proposals from new audit firm, for audit firms for new contracts. And, uh, we engaged Value Consulting, who's our financial consultants, they're really good at this. So they did mostly heavy lifting. They did send out, uh, developed a list of eligible firms. We did have some specifics, we wanted firms that had auditors that specifically do local government because local government accounting is so different than regular accounting. We didn't want to just get anyone, we wanted somebody new governmental accounting. So, um, they had a list that they developed and we sent those out. We ended up getting back three proposals. One was our current auditor, Bell Harris, and then Brock. One was our current auditor, Bell Harris, and then Brockway, Gerbach, Franklin, and Newmeyer, and then Patilla Brown and Hill. So they went through and evaluated all this, found that all the firms were qualified. We've had a really good work relationship with Bell Harris. They they greatly helped us transition because the city had not changed auditors in over, I guess, thirty years. So.
This is the same auditor from last year?
Well, Bell Harris was the auditor we had last year.
In the year before?
Yeah, the previous year.
Yeah.
So, but most cities like to take a look at, you know, maybe having a different set of eyes.
For sure, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
So, so that's why we did this process. So there's no reason for us to say we don't want Bell Harris back. We like Bell Harris. We have a good relationship with him. But there is a significant price difference between them and Patilla Brown and Hill. And it doesn't hurt to always have a different set of eyes come in periodically and look at your books.
And Patilla Brown and Hill's a local company, right?
Yes, they are a local firm. We did meet with them. Two of the partners who would be involved with overseeing our audit, and we felt pretty comfortable with them. So it is a change. So we do have to change and then will be some things a little different, but we will, we will be able to handle that. So I'm looking at Karen there. It'll be five years, just like the other. Typically, we do them five-year contracts. If we had to change every year, you'd probably have to get all new people, including city manager. But it, it is a little bit, it is a little bit trying that first year to change to a new thing. I mean, it, it is good. Most of them now do everything online, so you can upload everything.
And I like the fact that they're local, you know.
So, so staff is recommending, uh, Patilla Brown and Hill. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
Just seizing their bid comparisons that they have ninety days to revoke. Oh, you're revoking.
I have one question. You said your staff are recommending, uh, Patilla, on the recommendation on the agenda since they're recommending Dell Harris, the chapter. Let's see, what's this show?
Oh, yeah. That's, that's because they used last times and then all to do it.
They're forgetting.
So, yeah, no, we're recommending, everything else in there says we're recommending.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
I make the motion to approve, Phil Brown and Hill. Item nineteen, considering possible action appointing one of the alternates on the county's own commission place six due to vacancy created by the passing of permission.
We have two alternates. Wesley Gilbreth, I think I see his name correctly, Gilbreth, or Jan or Reed, both serve as alternates. Craig, fill in a little bit as to.
Uh, yeah, so, so both are, both are alternates. I don't, one is place one, which usually means they were appointed previously. I will say that, uh, Mr. Gilbreth has been in most of the P and Z meetings and when we've been short and contacted him, he has tried to make a point to be here and step in and fill the void. So he's been more of a regular attendee than Ms. Reed has. And she's been to one meeting. Yeah, I think just one meeting since.
I'll make a motion to appoint Wesley Gilbreth in place six.
On second.